Good evening and welcome to the Town of Douglas Planning Board Meeting of December, what is today?
Eleventh.
Eleventh, thank you. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted by Local Access Programming and with remote participation available as provided on our agenda. Is there anyone here recording tonight's meeting? Thank you. I hereby call the meeting to order at 7:01. Members in attendance are...
Aaron's so crowded here.
Mike DeRose.
Rich Preston.
Jake Attick.
Mike Swoker.
Meg Schlesman. Excused this evening are Mike Greco and Jake Schultzberg. The first item on the agenda is an A and R for 11 Gleason Court. Mr. Benoit?
Yes, Madam Chair. So, our engineer is actually on Zoom if he wants to chime in, but this was voted at town meeting recently because what we're dealing with is a portion of the land to the right of the grammar school, can't see it here, is coming from the control of the school department to the board of selectmen to make this a more conforming lot. Before, the old line had it right up against the building for the most part, so it had a non-conforming issue with rear setback. So this makes it more conforming and hopefully more marketable for purchase when this goes out to bid with an RFP. The engineer has any comments on this? I reviewed it. It meets all of the requirements of our regulations. Have to answer any questions? No second comments as well?
No, again, this is Zach from Existing Grade, we're the survey project here. I think the only thing that we did in addition to creating what is parcel area, which is just over 12,000 square feet, and it's the south of the grammar school, is there was a little portion of land on the north side of Gleason Court that was kind of a gap in ownership land, so we're removing a property line right on the north side of Gleason Court, incorporating that back into the Town of Douglas parcel. So this A and R kind of accomplishes both of those. You know, from our understanding, when Gleason Court was laid out, there was just a little strip of land that kind of was almost no man's land for lack of better terms, so we're just going to be removing that lot line as well with this.
Sure. That's what it says, "to be removed." So one of the other things that came up was the status of Gleason Court as a public way. So when this was recorded at the registry, it was recorded as an easement, but town meeting vote supersedes it as acceptance as a public way up to the end of the cul-de-sac that's on the easement plan. So even though it's an easement plan, the reference to the town meeting vote is on this plan to say that this is a public way. So it's also made clear. We had to go through that for a little while, a couple of months, right Zach? Took us a little bit.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and we had some conference with town council as well to ensure that's the case.
Yep. So that's item 11 in the general notes, accepted as 55, 50-foot wide public way, town meeting vote made for 2015, Article 14. Everything here is good on my end.
Do any of the planning board members have questions? No? Seeing as none, I'll entertain a motion to endorse the A and R.
So move.
Second. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
No one is opposed and no one has abstained. Seeing no more questions, the motion carries.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I'll abstain.
You'll abstain?
Yes.
Okay. So noted. The motion carries.
Thanks, Zach.
Perfect, thanks. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the 7:00 PM public hearing, Capital Cannabis Application for an amended site plan review and special permit. The legal notice of public hearing, the name of the applicant is Capital Cannabis, the name of the owner is Teresa Madison. The applicant is requesting approval from the Douglas Planning Board pursuant to the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 9.4 Amendment for Site Plan Review and Section 9.3 Special Permit for a drive-through at an existing facility. The project entails the construction of a garage structure for use as a drive-through window for an existing cannabis retail business. The project is located at 93 Davis Street in Douglas, Massachusetts, assessors map 168, parcel 15. Okay. Would you like to come up? Oh, I'm sorry, the public hearing is now open.
Good evening.
Barry Yatchison with WDA Design Group. I'm the civil engineer.
Okay.
Project.
Thank you.
Teresa Madison, 93 Davis.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Mr. Benoit?
I'll go through their presentation.
Would you like to present?
Sure. Just a quick discussion on it. This project, the building and the facility and the operation was prior permitted somewhere around 2020 or thereabouts. It's been in operation since. At that time, the building did contain a, approved at that time, to have a drive-in on the back end of the facility. Due to some other constraints and so forth, it wasn't built, so we've come back around and that's why we're doing an amendment now to just add the garage at the end of the building to allow a window and a drive-up facility. With that, did require a few changes, one of them being the front entrance to the right side of the building needed to be a little wider due to discussions we had with the fire department and their access in and out and around the facility. Matt, they sent a couple of, an updated plan.
Yep.
Did that get routed to the board?
That's this one, right?
I believe so.
Yep.
Yes. Through our discussions that we had with the, all the departments last week, we had suggested some changes in there. One of them was making sure that we had the right vehicle for turning radius, and it's our understanding the fire department may be looking to get a larger vehicle from what we had initially back in 2023. So you've got a pretty large fire truck that we did a turning analysis on, meeting the current fire codes and requirements on that. It didn't really require us to adjust the front entrance at all, so we're still adding about 250 square feet of pavement for that entrance. Then we adjusted the bypass or staging area for where vehicles would stop before they go into the drive-through, just the concern was whether people would stop in the middle of the drive aisle and not being allowed to get the emergency vehicles around when they needed to. So we've added, instead of calling a bypass, it's no, it's a fire lane essentially, so we put that on there and opened up a stop bar for cars to stop so they leave that aisle open during casual damn business so that a vehicle could get in and out of there. Another discussion we had is just next door to the drive-through, it's roughly a 12-foot wide bay that's currently paved now, because it was going to be initially put on in the part of the building before. It's essentially a 12-foot addition on the end. It really makes a tight squeeze about an eight-foot width around the back of the building. We wanted to keep it accessible for people, fire truck, not fire truck, but fire apparatus, people to get around, but we did put some bollards in there. The fire department had a little issue with that, just, you know, what would happen, but kind of interested to see what you folks have to say. Our intention is to put bollards there at the moment or some, a stop bar or something so that cars don't go through there. It's really an eight-foot wide aisle, it really, just to eliminate people when they come out of the drive-through and any kind of changes there. So we changed that whole drive on the right-hand side, circular motion, get in, get out, and around, so. It's beyond the front entrance way and the new end of the building and some new painted lines, that's about the extent of the project.
Okay, thank you.
So, one thing, we sent this out for peer review, obviously. Our peer review estimates have not been covered yet by the applicant, so our peer review has not had an opportunity to review this project yet. I'd ask the applicant which reviewer they'd like to choose? I sent two estimates, one for...
Yeah, you sent two estimates, and what we had discussed, I just wanted to reiterate, was we're going to go with, I think it's Quinn was the one that you, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
I was just suggesting, making a suggestion, that there would be a phone conversation between them and Leonard, who is very familiar with the property. Not that Leonard has to do the project, but maybe they could have a conversation.
Yeah.
Because of the fact that there's such a history behind this project, and he has all that history from day one, that I don't know if there's going to be a charge or not, but I believe there should be some type of phone conversation.
Yeah.
That's all.
I think that's...
But otherwise, we'll pick the one, the Quinn, absolutely.
Okay. One of the things I had asked a tech review was about the increase in impervious surface on the turning in, that the engineer was going to provide some sort of letter to say that it's not an increase or something like that. What did you come up with?
Yeah, I can...
Through the chair, sorry.
Through the chair, yeah. There's an increase, as I mentioned before, about 250 square feet of pavement through the study. It's a very minor increase in stormwater, very large infiltration and treatment system that's on the property, and I will provide the board my thoughts on that. Really doesn't impact the existing stormwater system there.
Okay.
And it's also the, it's just that increase in the front. Everything else is being built on top of prior impervious surfaces.
Sure. So, at this point, the fire department is not necessarily going to mandate that they get around the back of the building, you're coming up with a different solution, which I see. You have these bollards, are they removable? Are they not removable? I have no problem with the bollards. If you don't need to get around, you don't need to get around.
I think my preference would be to have them removable with a key for emergency accessible, pick them and they pull them up and drive over.
What is the distance from the edge of the building currently to the stone block wall?
To the curb is, from the wall to the curb is eight feet.
You have, no, from the existing phase, not including the 12-foot addition, so you're talking about 20 feet?
Yes.
Okay. If you're going to be eight feet, and that's not enough really for a driveway, why not go to six feet? Make a 12-foot opening, you know, do a 14-foot bay, 12-foot overhead, you know, is it overhead doors? You're going to lock them up at night? Like, do these doors, they come down?
There will be doors that come up on both sides.
Right.
Because through the CCC, they need to be...
People are not perfect when they're driving. I'd like to see a 14-foot addition instead of the 12 if you don't need the eight feet, because you're putting bollards anyway, and then put a 12-foot overhead door on both sides. Don't do eight, you know, certainly you're not doing eight, you probably do 10, but do 12.
Right.
Give yourself some room there.
No, that sounds, that sounds very reasonable, because I do remember that when we were on with the fire department, their main concern was not that they needed to get any type of vehicle behind the building, it was more about being able to pull hoses behind the building, just being able to access physically themselves to get behind the building. So what you're proposing...
Six feet and eight feet don't matter.
What you're proposing is actually, actually a better idea.
I'm concerned for the, you know, the safety of the pedestrians and, you know, because somebody might open their door, get out the car, you know, you have a window, you might have a little tray thing that comes out or something, like a bank or whatever, so.
Exactly.
Give yourself some room. I'd rather see 14 than 12. I mean, I'm not designing anything for you, I'm just saying for safety, so.
That's what we're here for.
Great suggestion, thank you.
Any other questions?
Sure, through the chair. So the purpose of the doors are off-hour security? The overhead doors?
No, the purpose of the doors is that when somebody enters in, it's going to be, the doors are going to go up and there's going to be cameras in there, and then the door has to go down, and the building has to be sealed with the...
Okay.
Patriot inside it order before the transaction.
That's, that's what I was thinking, so they're, they're going to be somehow automated or something like that?
Absolutely, yep.
Yeah, good. So there's going to be probably some sort of sign or something at the entry saying, you know, "don't enter" or whatever, so that people know when it's okay to move, or...
Is there a lighter, anything that goes green, open, or anything like that to allow them in?
Well, that's what we would have to do, so allow them when they're coming in, it would have to be a green light and the door would open and they would go in.
You just...
The door would go down and there would be a red light.
Again, just a, it's a thought.
Yep.
When you think about people that aren't used to driving into garages and things like that, they go too early.
Yeah.
They're going to skin their roof.
You mean like drive, like when you're going through a car wash and you're going to the end and you're just waiting, waiting for that light to turn green, yeah?
Through the chair, there's going to be sensors on these doors.
Of course, yes.
Everything's going to be automated, so.
But, but the person's going to be going in as it's going up, they'll see it up and it may not be high enough for their car.
I think there'll be a red green light or something.
Yeah, something like that.
Signage, something, yeah.
Yeah, because I just think of all the ways people can mess up.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, those bollards, if, it's good to make it six feet, but at some point, somebody's going to try and go around the back, probably at night.
Yeah, an 18 building that tried to go behind my building one night, yeah, they ended up having to back, back out. Didn't work very well.
Preston, do you have a question? No? Will there be security cameras back there?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We have 40 cameras now.
Yes.
We would have to have, everything has to be, every inch of the building outside and inside has to be viewed, even in the beginning when we went through our, when we had to, we were, we got our provisional and then we had to go to final. When we went to final, I actually had to walk the entire outside of the building in every room, so they could see every aspect. So it's going to be exactly the same level of security out for that.
Will there be cameras inside once the doors go down?
Inside, yeah, outside.
Okay. Mr. Benoit?
I've got a couple additional questions. So, as it exists now, the first entrance is in, the second one is out, right? Neither of them are two-way, right? So, coming out, I think each side's going to need a stop sign or something.
Yes.
To let the folks know, right?
Yes.
And also, with this drive-in lane, this stop bar, in the winter, no one's going to be able to see that, right? So we need some sort of visible, I don't know, what is this here? Is this just a hatched area?
It's a hatched area, yeah, right, I can come through on that. Whatever.
I mean, you could offset your impervious by making that some sort of landscape island, but I don't know, that's, put a sign on it or something.
Put a buried post in there with a stop sign or something of that sort.
Something, right? Just, once that line's buried, it's buried.
Is it needed?
Because you have to keep that lane clear for the fire apparatus.
But you're not keeping the other side clear. You need to have both sides the same.
I'm saying like where the drive-in lane comes in, where the truck comes around, there's a break in the drive-in lane between the one-way and the drive-in lane. That's where the sign needs to be, because they're only going in one way, right? Talking right here.
You're talking about at the top?
Yeah.
The corner?
Exactly.
I'm talking about down at the entrance.
Yeah, the entrance should have stop signs.
I don't know, you have an island?
It's a painted island.
Just a paint, it's not going to be a raised island?
No.
But you're going to be increasing the, at the driveway?
Nope, not touching that.
Well, you're making them both in and out, so that was originally designed for a one-way, now you're making it a two-way. So how are you going to do that?
The, the left side always been in and out, so it's already got a stop.
That's where we do our deliveries.
But now it's an in and out.
So when you have two cars, opposite direction, in the same, it should be open and bigger, is that what you're getting at?
The original plan was in one side, you came out the other. Now you're having them both in and out. You're increasing one, not increasing the other.
The other side was already, the other side was approved, the side that you're talking about right now, that was, that's our delivery side, and that side was approved as-is with two-way traffic, because the deliveries come in on that side and the deliveries come out on that side.
So through the chair.
And there's no way that you can go around the building on that side, because there is a stop sign, so, because you can't have two-way traffic around the building.
So through the chair. The original print, it's a one-way, there's an arrow, one-way only.
Okay.
Just so you see.
Was that changed?
I don't care what she's saying on this, it was originally designed as in on one and out on the other, was the original design plan.
We can look at that. And...
You don't want to get that, so you're making them both in and outs. And then through the chair, the only last thing is the incompletion of the original project with the top coat of the pavement. How are we going to handle it on this?
When this is done, it will be done. It was already discussed in the preliminary hearing that when this, we've been holding off on doing the top course, because we always knew we were coming back for this, and that was raised in the last meeting that I had with you, that we were going to hold off on this because we were coming back for future construction. So when the future construction is completed, the top course will be done.
Now, are we going to have a surety on that?
Surety, withholding the occupancy, right?
Full occupancy?
Yeah, until the project's built, put into the plan.
Okay.
Not going to have to post a bond, I mean, that's...
Yeah, let's go.
Question for you, Mr. Benoit, do we, are they required to formally respond to all of the fire department's concerns in their letter?
It's a great question. One of the other questions I asked in addition to that was for them to reach out to the police department. Were we able to connect with the chief of police?
Not yet.
Okay, all right. I'd like comments from them as well, they weren't available. I could also reach out or work. Yeah, I'd like to provide this term plan to the fire department, so they can respond to it, since they've given us a red light.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing as this is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I've got one question.
Of course.
With the CCC, these drive-throughs, they were just recently permitted, like allowed, and they gave these design standards for these bays, right? This was within the last three or four years, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. So when this was originally done, they didn't have these design specs for these things yet?
Not quite yet.
Right, that's probably why you pulled it at the time.
Yes.
Okay.
And it was also to speed the project along so we could get up and at least get running, and we have been running for three years solid with not one infraction.
Awesome. All right.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that has any questions? Can you please come forward and state your name and your address?
Yes, my name is Jeremy C. Flansburgh, I live at 63 Monroe Street, and I own 73 Davis Street, which is directly across the street. The field, you probably all know. I just want this board to know that when I, when I moved into this house, it was so nice. Now it's like Fenway Park in my backyard. The only request, I, I don't care, because I'm letting the jackpines grow up taller and hopefully in the spring, I won't have to see it again, but I'm requesting that no more lights be installed. This place is pretty much well-lit, and it's quite bothersome, I mean, if you're going to go out and buy blinds, because for the first year or maybe six months, the establishment left their lights on 24/7. And my second comment is, I just, I just request like no illuminated signs that says "drive-through," and, you know, just because right off the bat, it's in my backyard, I'm right there at 63 Monroe Street, and I own 73, and I could see this whole thing. The last thing I have to say is traffic. What happens when people queue up here to go into this drive-through and it starts backing out on Route 16? And since this pot shop's been there, I've already had two people going, I believe, eastbound, jump the guardrail and go down the 20-foot banking into my property. I don't know if it's the speed limit or signage on the road caution, people entering on the right, on the other direction, people entering on the left, or, you know, business ahead, something, but, I mean, people are getting, I mean, I've seen two people jump the curb and go down the hill, and, you know, they spash into all my trees and stuff to that nature, and, quite frankly, I mean, it is what it is, but, and I kind of agree with this gentleman here, that it was designed for a one-way direction, and I think that that's the best intention, because the exit closest to Doug, to Monroe Street gives people a longer distance to view the cars coming, and, you know, and I have seen people leave the big parking lot side, you know, from the Webster side of Route 16, and that can cause, and that seems to be the side where everybody jumps the curb, they don't jump the curb, they jump the curb and then they jump the guardrail and then they land in my field. And that's the only two things. I wish them the best of luck, but please keep the lights down, and something's going to be done about the traffic, and he's correct, we're going to enforce the one-way, if that's in fact the way it should be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Flansburgh, Mr. Benoit, is that something that will come up in terms of at least the traffic during the police review?
Police are going to be looking at security, right? They want safety. Perhaps they'll look at circulation. Through you to the, to the engineer, could you give us a number for how many cars could queue in the drive-through lane?
Yep.
That'd be helpful. And the sign, is there specs on the drive-through sign? Do you have anything on that? The drive-in sign, that's right here? Are there any specs on that?
I don't think I've given them, no.
Okay. Curious to know, it's, I don't, I don't think Douglas has illuminated signs at the town, I could be wrong.
There's no illuminated, the signage that we have and the lighting that we have was completely approved when we, the last time we came before you. I do remember that we had to go back because there was an ever-so slight over our boundaries, and all the lighting that, that's there, we have to remember that everything that's there right now is exactly, is the way it was approved and built exactly the way this board wanted it to be approved, right down to the lighting not being even a fraction over the, over the boundaries, and what the, what the, how light it is, and nothing has changed. Nothing has changed. And the accident that he's talking about was a very horrific accident, I do remember that, and that had nothing to do with us. That was somebody coming from Oxbridge that fell asleep and jumped it, had nothing to do with us. Accidents are accidents.
Are there plans for any additional lights?
No.
With the addition of the drive-through?
Not on the outside.
Okay.
There's no need for any...
Inside.
And the lighting that's in the parking lot is the lighting in the parking lot that is, that was already approved in order for us to be open, and because of the facility that we are and security purposes, it cannot be shut down. Absolutely not.
I'm not saying that it shouldn't be, I understand that the parking lot lights have to be on 24/7, I get that, ma'am. I'm just saying, graphic illuminated signs that are currently on, that you've been nice enough now to shut on and off while you're open and closed. Are we adding any more of those?
Absolutely.
To like a drive-through building or, or side of the, of your existing building?
No more lights are being added, and secondly, the illuminated sign that's on the front of the building has always been on a timer. on a timer. It goes on at dusk and it goes off every day when we close. Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we close at eight. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, we close at nine.
I agree.
They're on timers. They're on timers. That's it.
So there's no plan to add any additional illuminated signs? I think that's what.
Yes. No, no more.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam, Chairwoman? I'm sorry.
Of course.
I do have a question, if I could. I don't know if you anticipate how successful the drive-in will be, but taking a look at the layout here, I see you have parking on both sides as they come in before the quote-unquote "drive-in lane." If it's backed up, that could be an issue for cars that have already parked. They won't be able to get out. Have you considered that? If the drive-in's successful?
That would have a lot to do with the stacking. And the stacking, I know that the stacking that we could, that we could have from that entire lane all the way around is well over 10, 15 cars.
Right. But you have parking on both sides. So if it is backed up and cars using those spaces wouldn't be able to get out.
They're stacked up here, packing up there.
Well, that's the whole spacing. We're supposed to have enough space where they can back up even though that they're queued in line. That's part of a drive-through. They have to make sure that they can still get out. Absolutely.
Yeah. And you have spaces on both sides. So my thought was having the drive-through may eliminate the need for as many spaces as you have.
Absolutely.
Would there ever be a consideration of eliminating the spaces on the right? And then you'd have all that space to be a dedicated.
Yep.
Queue.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
And it won't affect the others.
We have well over, we have so much parking. Our parking, literally the bylaw was only 18. But when we were going through this in the beginning, Mr. Kundoff was very insistent about parking analysis and, you know, having 75 spaces and, because we didn't know how it was going to work. Well, I've already proved in three years how it's going to work. I haven't had any issues whatsoever. So actually eliminating parking spaces is not a problem. Absolutely not. Because we actually discussed if we couldn't get that 25-foot turning radius, we were actually going to remove two parking spaces in the front and a handicap because we only have to have two handicaps. We only need two handicaps up to 75 spots. We have less than 75 spots. And we went over that in the meeting. It's one up to 25, 25 to 50 is one, and 50 to 75 is two. Anything over 75, you have to have three. So I have plenty of room to pull off that. Absolutely.
Right. And if you were able to consider accommodating that, then it would, you'd have a dedicated drive-in lane all the way out, almost out to the street.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Without blocking anyone.
Yeah.
You're talking about removing the 10 spaces on the right-hand side?
Yes.
Makes sense.
Yep.
That would even increase the bypass lane.
Yep. That's not a problem.
Through the chair, I can ask a question. We drive by there a lot, my wife says. And she goes, nothing about all of this. She goes, I hope they're doing really well because it looks like there's a lot of parking left over. And we never, you know, you see eight, 10 cars there. That's about, you know, generally what I'd see. Maybe I don't go at the right times, but, you know, are you filling up the parking? There's a lot of parking out there.
It's a lot of parking. I can tell you, there's a little joke that we say, the bus comes in and the bus goes out. You can be there in one minute and there's one person there and they're like, oh my God, it's one, I'm only, I'm by myself, you know. Usually it's packed and I'm like, hang on. And sure enough, here comes one person, two person, three person. But, I mean, we are.
But you don't fill all those spaces.
We have filled all those spaces. We have functions where we have filled all those spaces.
Functions are separate.
And every weekend, we have had that side completely filled.
Right.
At certain times of the day.
You do not need these additional here.
These back ones across here, these back ones across here are mostly for just employees. We have designated spots for employees right across here. And if you were to go on the other side of the building, there is parking spaces where the outside dumpster is and where, and then there's another gravel space where the propane tanks are. That is designated for just us, like when we do have functions to get our cars out of the way. So these spaces across here are not, they're not used. These are all used. These are not used. Not unless we have a heat function, but yeah, we're, we're, we're very busy.
We're just.
Very busy.
Yes, Mr. Flansburgh?
Jeremy Flansburgh, 63 Monroe Street. Is this drive-through going to be handicap accessible and is it impacting any of the existing handicap spots?
I just answered that. We have three parking spaces on the property right now, which is actually overkill. That's for 75-spot spaces or more. So we have all of the handicap spaces still in place and a drive-through is handicap accessible. You're not even getting out of your vehicle. You're driving in, you're driving out.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Flansburgh?
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? No? Seeing as this is a public hearing, is there anyone online that has any comments or questions? Okay. Seeing as none, I'll ask for, well, we'll need to ask for a motion to continue because the peer review has not been completed yet. Someone like to make a motion?
Sure. We'll make a motion to continue to our.
January.
January. It'll be January what?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth at 7:00?
At 7:00 PM.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing as none, I'll ask for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
To continue. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you so very much.
See you in January.
I'll see you in January.
Good luck.
Did I have to close? Close the hearing? No. Okay. Okay. Have a great day, gentlemen. Thank you.
Yeah, good night. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
The next item on the agenda is a bond reduction for Legacy Circle. Possible votes?
Good evening, Tom McIntyre, Six Legacy Circle LLC and KTKT LLC.
Good evening. Would you like to present?
Sure. Yeah, I'm just here seeking a bond reduction in the amount of $109,125, which will leave a balance of $21,000. That's because we have completed all the finished work we set forth in the bond over the last few months. The roadway's complete in terms of all the work we needed to do. And the remaining $21,000 is there for completion of NASB build, installation of concrete bounds, and there's a little money there, I think, for the clean-out of the drainage structures.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Benoit, did you have?
Yeah. So the bond has since accrued a little interest, so it is a little higher than what's in the request. So what's being asked for of the existing bonds, 131, 150, 92, is a reduction of 110, 150, 92 for a remainder of $21,000 in the account. The peer review consultant reviewed this and he says that $21,000 is sufficient for setting the roadway balance creation and issuance of the roadway as-built and cleaning of the drainage structure.
What was that magic number?
110, 150, 92.
Yep. It's reducing the bond from 131, 150, 92 by 110, 150, 92. So leave a remainder of $21,000.
What was that magic number?
110, 150, 92.
Yep. It's reducing the bond from 131, 150, 92 by 110, 150, 92. So leave a remainder of $21,000.
Any questions? No?
Give the man his money.
Will entertain a motion?
Sure. I'll try, give it a shot.
Do you like to read it? And you can soak it?
entertain a motion for a bond reduction in the amount of $110,150.92, which will leave a remainder of $21,000 even for Six Legacy Circle LLC.
Set.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any opposed? Any abstain? Thank you. Seeing as none.
Thank you all.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next thing on our agenda is our subdivision regs. We're going to cover this a little later because we have some other things to get to. But because Mr. McIntyre's here, kind of brought up a good point with this bond review, that there's not a, there's not a line item in our performance guarantees for ongoing maintenance once the roadwork is done. And we couldn't ask him to put that in a bond which is already established. So something that I'm looking to probably add to our regulations is performance guarantees should include a line item for maintenance of roadway, sidewalks, driveway apron, stormwater obstruction, all utilities until the road is accepted as a public way in a town. Something we need to add to our regulations to.
Makes sense.
So it's something which is just kind of caught here because of this, what was going on. And, you know, Mr. McIntyre is obviously, he wants a road to be accepted. He's going to obtain it and all that stuff. But having that in our regulations would be very important. I don't know if you want to say anything more?
Yeah, I was going to add one thing is whether you want to, we talked about whether there maybe should be not so much different standards, but different things you'd look for where it's a non-residential subdivision.
Yeah. Right.
Just to keep in mind. And the one other thing I was thinking about when it comes to non-residential subdivisions, somewhat speaking for myself, I think you're going to find more likely than not that the applicant's someone that's going to own one of those lots too, which might change the calculus on that because I have vested interests to keep that road maintained.
Right.
Because our business is at the end of it. Whereas a residential, it might not be. Anyway, those are some things that Matt and I were talking about when you were giving this.
Yeah. We don't differentiate between residential and commercial subdivision, or industrial subdivision.
No, you can't. Yeah.
I believe the enabling statute allows you to.
Yeah.
Yeah, should we?
I'm not town council, but.
Right.
Which you could be planning for.
And attorney, but not the town attorney. So I believe that's to him.
Yeah. So he raises a really good point and I just, since he was here, to bring it up. It's kind of the first industrial subdivision we've had, so.
And there could be more.
Yep.
So something where it should definitely be something put in there.
Yep.
That way there, it's up and up front, you know, going in. Everybody knows what's going to go on.
Right. So now the road could be accepted, but there's still a bunch of lots that are set to be developed. The town would take on the road, but then the town's responsible for maintaining it as those new lots are built.
Correct.
And she comes in to do that. So it's just, there's nothing we can do about this one now, but it's something to be looking out for in the future.
And it would be, it would be a burden to the town.
Right.
A big burden.
I'd submit that's different, whereas the whole point is to establish the roadway and it's, it's irrelevant whether lots are developed or not. It's just about creating lots.
Right.
And pointing out in this one, every lot except for one is currently being used in a by rider, especially permanent manner.
Right.
Despite the fact that there's no building itself.
Right.
You might have to do some weird things on non-residential that you don't get elsewhere.
Right.
And those are my two cents where we were kicking this around last week.
Yeah.
I'm in that exact circumstances where I work, where there's a road established and everything, but there's still available lots. But yet, a lot of the industrial park is being used, but a lot of it is still watered land that you don't know who or what's going to come in.
So, Mr. Benoit, could we look at whether or not residential and commercial should be separated and see how other towns are, are doing it within their subdivision?
Yep.
You could do that.
Great.
No, good point. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you for taking me out of order on that.
Yep. Thanks.
Thank you.
So we'll continue our subdivision discussion a little later, but we've got some other folks here, so.
Sure. Under ongoing, oh, sorry, master plan. Do we want to do master plan next?
Well, since our last meeting, the master plan hasn't met, right? Right. Yeah. We'll be meeting a week from now on, the 18th. The CMRPC is still collecting data regarding the surveys and the open house. They gave us an initial, some initial data, but they're still putting it all together. They're hoping to go over it and we'll be talking about next steps.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda under ongoing development is BW Solar at Oak Street, minor modification request.
Through the chair, I recuse myself.
Certainly. Thank you.
What they're asking for here on this is minor modification to the approved plan. Kind of in the center of the plan, there's a little bubble that reads the second agricultural well has been eliminated from this, this design. That's the only change here. What they, apparently they were able to get enough flow rate from their one well that they didn't feel the need, they needed a second well for the proposed agricultural use, which is unknown to us at this time. And I don't know if Blue Wave wants to elaborate any further on this request. But Elvira or Greg, since you're both here?
Yeah. This is Elvira with Blue Wave. I mean, that pretty much covers it. We drilled the first well and got the flow rate that we needed out of that. The water source will primarily be used for like animal drinking water, so we don't need a ton of water. And so we are opting to not drill the second well and would like permission to not do that.
So. Through the chair, do we happen to know what the agricultural use is proposed to be yet?
I think the, what has been provided previously is hay and sheep grazing. We will be providing an ag plan as part of the town's request for final closeout of the project. As we work out the details with the farmers that will be using the land.
Okay. Clear. I don't have any issues with this. They've got the water that they need. The piping is all, it's not going to be underground, it's going to be above. And they haven't done that yet, but it's, they're still working on the project, so.
Through the, through the chair from the house. Have you started to consider structures for livestock on the property?
That's all part of our agricultural team's kind of plans. There will be no permanent structures, like, I don't know, shelter or anything like that as far as I know. And anything that they would propose to build would obviously go through the town for approval first. There is a heavy-use animal area that has been installed per the plans. So that's in place right now. For, for our scope, that, that covers it.
Okay. I just, you know, we'll see it when it comes. Just concerned that there should be shelter that is easily available and at nighttime they're put in and things like, you can't just leave sheep out all night and, you know, hope that they go in. We'll figure it out later. That's all.
Do any of you drive a blue Lexus SUV? Its interior lights are on, if so.
Part down in the gym.
Okay. Probably don't let them.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1647.59]
Thank you.
So, I may have to share my screens. Just kind of review some photos, this was from December 3rd recently, obviously, there's a lot of stabilization that's still needed up here, right? And the commitments was they're gonna put some hay down, these are just some, some photos through the array, right? The things, they got this little mulch barrier here, that's in between that and basin five, just kind of some of the areas that don't have the seeding down yet, and it's tough to get, obviously, grass growing right now, so we're looking for some form of stabilization, and so a lot of overland, so this one, it was really cold before it got wet, so you'll see. This is one of the areas, they continued that little mulch right there, and that, that is now covered, and this is along the southern side of the property. There's a trench in the roadway there, but anyway, we'll go into the photos that I took today.
Matt, this is Jason, Blue Wave.
Yes, sir.
Did you hear me or no?
Yes.
We, we, as you saw, there is a little bit of growth that came up, we definitely wish that there had been more rain between November and today, obviously.
Yeah.
But it is somewhat interesting that it's on the anniversary of the first day this all occurred last year.
Yeah, this is to the date, so this is video basin five today, right? It's gonna fill the lot, so, so I talked to the project manager, Greg Morehouse, today about trying to get some stabilization up there, and I guess they have some hay going up there tomorrow. Confirm, Greg?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, Greg Morehouse, we're on military renewables, so, yep, they'll be doing the perimeters tomorrow with all the rains, that we don't wanna tear up the middle so much, so we're gonna be back on Friday, so it's gonna be a two-day process for that, but it is beginning tomorrow.
Yeah. So, so the basin is very silty, because it took a lot of.
What was it after today?
Yeah, and this is just, this was about 12:30 today.
Today, yeah.
Yeah, and it's obviously.
Another inch, inch, and a half a week.
Right, so this is heading east, going down the South Road, this is while it was raining pretty heavy, so obviously, a lot of lack of stabilization over here, right? I'm just kind of driving here, there's some grass, but it's not really taking it, and it's, I don't know if it's sheep blowing, but it's, it's making its way down into basins three and four, where it's then hitting the level spreader as it's designed, but obviously, if this flow could be slowed with some stabilization, that would certainly help matters, and there's that little mulch barrier. Yeah, I got a car, but I'll show you an extra photo. There's a level spreader that we approved as a modification, this is basin three, that was kind of full up a little bit. And one of the concerns here is there's definitely some siltation over the silt fence, it's onto the Kroll's property over here, so we need to get this under control with stabilization like yesterday, but unfortunately, it's raining a lot, so it's good to hear that Greg has engaged the folks to shoot the hay on the property, it's gonna start getting cold again, so we want that stuff to take right away, right? Get stable.
Yep, exactly, and, you know, with the, the snow we've had recently, obviously, it all melted today, that's why it wasn't put down earlier, just because if we put that on top of the snow, it would have just immediately washed away.
This is the, the wetland over here, this, there's a berm here, and that's been holding so far, and these hoses are pumps, so they're pumping from basin five into basin four, and then into basin three. Is that correct? Yeah.
Yeah, so not, not necessarily into basin three and four, we're kind of swapping back and forth between basin four, letting them drain down, moving to the next one, and just continuing that process.
Okay. So, they're actively trying to get this under control, which is certainly helpful, just this is our first rain event, so it's important.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is a big one with, you know, how dry it's been the past few, you know, six months or so, so this is all the residuals kind of being washed away, so we'll get the stabilization down, we're expecting it to be much improved as we continue through the winter.
Yeah, so, one observation is I didn't notice any overflows of any of the basins over the emergency spillway, so that was definitely a positive, so we didn't have anything really getting through on basin five, which was our big trouble area last year, so that was nice to see, but I just think we gotta keep an eye on it, obviously, and make sure that it gets stable as soon as possible, right? So, I just wanted to report this to you guys, this is fine news after today.
Yep, and then just on that note, we do have a overnight crew there today to just keep an eye on things and make sure everything stays within the site where it should be.
Can I ask a question on, on an ongoing basis? Will this site be staffed to, how are things going to get pumped from one place or swapped from one to another, once everything is up and running and, and things are stabilized? Will it be staffed in perpetuity, or?
No, so what's gonna happen when we get the grass growth is we have all those outlet control structures, those are those big square pieces of concrete in the basin, before we're stabilized, we know that water's gonna be silty going to the basin, so we have caps on those, so no silty water gets out, but once we have stabilization, it's not washing away, so we'll be able to open those up, and the water will just drain naturally, and anything over a certain level will be drained through that outlet control structure.
And how often will someone be checking those?
We will be providing an operations and maintenance plan as part of the closeout of the project as well to the town, and that plan outlines all of the sort of maintenance that we will be doing, and I think there's after a certain size storm event, I unfortunately can't remember off the top of my head, but we have, we will have staff on site to look over any, you know, the conditions of the site after, after storm events.
Through the chair, is that O and M plan different than the one that was submitted with the application, or a few slightly revised, or is that the same one we're gonna get?
No, so the, the O and M plan that was provided with the application was from the, the civil engineer, and then Blue Wave has an O and M plan sort of in addition to that, that further clarifies what our operations look like, so we'll provide that as well.
All right.
Both applying, I think, I think the plan that you have actually outlines this as well.
Any other questions from the board?
Comments, public?
Anyone have comments online?
All right, so the motion to approve the minor modification to remove the second well from the approved land.
So.
Second.
Yep, motion by Mr. Socrate, second by Mr. DeRose. Any further discussion? No?
No.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, through the chair, I just request one comment. Can you guys update, keep the rocks out of Oak Street? They haven't been sweeping it. You're up there today, I mean, you know the rocks are out on Oak Street, if you can, just be appreciated.
Who is this gentleman?
Who is this gentleman?
Mike Swarker, 46 Oak Street.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
There were in the beginning when there was heavy truck traffic, I know there isn't the truck traffic that much anymore, but they're still spitting all the rocks out on Oak Street.
Yeah, I'll have either my site supervisor take care of that in the morning.
Yeah, I mean, through the chair, I mean, it's not that bad, but nobody's doing anything about it, if you know what I mean, it's kind of been forgotten about. It'd be appreciated by the neighborhood.
Greg's the man.
Yeah, no problem at all.
Any further discussion?
Any further discussion?
I don't know.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm staying.
I'm staying.
Okay, motion carries.
Motion carries. Do we want to ask about coming to the next meeting with an update to stabilize, on stabilization of the site?
If you'd like to ask, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, could you come to the next meeting on January 15th to provide an update on the stabilization of the site?
Absolutely.
Would it suffice to just send some pictures, I'm not, but only after the straw has been sprayed?
That'd be good.
Yeah, absolutely, please do both.
Yeah, both would be good, if, if you wouldn't mind sending the pictures and then attending the meeting, that would be great.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next.
I think next was the discussion around the subdivision bylaws.
We have ASD Womps Solar.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Through the chair, I'm back.
Thank you, Mr. Swicker.
We sent the letter to Womps Solar, and Lawrence Cook is on Zoom, and he provided some photos, an update, and I will share some photos as well. Mr. Cook, would you like to respond to the letter?
Yeah, so apologies, there seemed to be a bit of a miscommunication on my part, or misunderstanding on my part. We met earlier on and discussed the seeding repair at the western edge of the array, and that was taken care of earlier on in the year, and what I really wanted to do was wait for some rain to happen, so that we could show that things were operating much more in line with expectations, and then obviously, it didn't rain for six months, so I supplied some photos to Matthew, to show the areas that have been repaired and the seeds all in. I was at the site earlier today to see how it's holding up in the rain, and, yeah, certainly much better, any of the water that was flowing was clear, and, and so, no signs of further erosion. There's a couple of things that we, I think we should do, the roadway that we discussed actually dried out, we wanted to see how it operated, once it had dried out, effectively, we've been, went for the entire time, it dried out, we got some growth on it, and as soon as the rain stopped today, so you've got back to the public, we'll get that part taken care of, and there's a, there's a small area right in the very sort of northwest corner, where there is a bit of a gully that has fallen, which we'll also take, take care of as well.
And so, these pictures I took on December 2nd, just showing that there's a lot of like grass growing in and out of the road, and that's kind of consistent throughout the site, the pollinators have really spread and kind of taken over the roadway a little bit, and that kind of goes around most of the entire site, right? They're kind of taking over. It's really hard to tell where you even go at some points. I know there's a road there, but it's hard to see, like, there's a road there, and it's all grassed over, so that was.
Through the chair to Mr. Benoit, is it grassed running through the gravel?
Yeah.
It's kind of okay, as long as they can see where they're going, I mean, that's.
It's a little tough to see where you're going.
But other than seeing, the erosion is being retarded, right, by the combination of the gravel wept with the, whatever the vegetation is.
So, these are some pictures I took today, Mr. Cook also took some pictures today, but I'll also kind of show, this was while it was raining pretty heavy at about 11:00 AM.
How did it feel underfoot, under tire?
Uh.
Solid or?
It was pretty solid, actually, until I got down to the end, and that's what he was just talking about down here, the.
Right, right.
It's a little soft right here, because it's, it's like grass, you can see it, right? So, as I get a little further down, because these rays don't oscillate like the ones at Blue Wave, they kind of create sort of trenches for overland flow, but, see any silt?
It's pretty clear, right?
I don't.
It's clear.
It's, it is, it's very clean, so there's your differences between these two sites, like, I'm gonna continue to drive, but this is at the end where the basin is, and there's a pretty sizable puddle right here, and.
Yeah, that, that's the area that I was talking about, that filled in with stone, it'll raise up, well, you probably use like three or four inch stone across the top there, it allows water to pass through, holds any sediment, does capture, but obviously, it provides more smooth surface.
At least I could see it.
That's a picture that he took today. So, they're gonna put some stone down here, or even some sort of like riprap trench on the.
So, I, I'm not sure the riprap trench will actually do anything, that's, that's kind of a hot spot at that point, all we'll do is just provide somewhere else for the sit where it's really sitting, but if we, if we build some stone around where that stone that your cursive is just at, the one that you can see just to the right of the road, that one there, yeah, so if we, if we put a few loads of stone along that part of the road, three, four inch minus provides a relatively stable, does provide a stable base that vehicles can go over, but it kind of lifts everything out of that puddle, because that water's always going to want to, when you have the sheet flow moving to the basins, it's always gonna wanna run through there, if we use a nice large, large stone on there, it'll allow the passage of water through, so it wouldn't hold back and cause any washouts, but it will just clean, clean up that area a little bit. It's a shame we can't kind of turn to the left, that, that's the area that I was talking about, where there is a bit of a gully, that bit that, that the bottom left there is to kind of be outflow from it.
Right.
And I think what we should do is we should put a couple, a couple of additional check downs on, on that line where it's coming down, but as you can see, the, that looks similar to when I was there this morning, I think we must have just missed each other.
Yeah, I missed you by like an hour.
Yeah, okay.
But, yeah, I'm gonna go back to that last video, because it shows the difference.
Through the chair, like he's saying, if he builds up the three to four, you know, stone across, it'll give stability to the road, but it'll let the water run through, that's the.
Yeah.
You know, they'll build the elevation up.
Right, so, I'm not an engineer, but this kind of seems like a design flaw, like there's always going to be overland flow going over this roadway, and it's constantly going to wash it out.
Right, so there's no swale that's keeping it back in the center.
Right, right, there's nothing on the left-hand side that's getting watered down and then a pipe going under the road to get the water into the basin. It's, it's, this is going to be a regular occurrence, even the stones is just a temporary solution.
No, the stone, the stone isn't a temporary solution, it, it, I mean, I'll have a chat with the engineer and see if he wants to, wants us to look at these pipes group, but the, the, the way that it was designed is that you've got the sheet flow that comes through farm, and that's where the basins are located.
Right.
In order for, in order for there to be some pipes, we'll have to dig down probably two to three feet along that area there, so that the pipes can be buried, or you would, would have to raise it by two foot in that area.
Yeah, it's just, one way or the other, this overland flow is gonna continuously wash out this access road.
But the, the, the access road's not washing out, even, even, I mean, that puddle's there, the, the access, the access road is still there, and it's the same way, the, the stone would lift it up, so you wouldn't be in the puddle when you're going around that corner, but, I mean, with, the site's been there for years now, and, I mean, there's a, a little bit of erosion towards the, the top of the site, but this bottom part of the site isn't, isn't washing out at all across the road there.
True, so it is clean water ending into the basin.
It's a low point, you know, on that roadway.
Right.
Yeah.
If you built it up, then you're not gonna perceive the water underneath if you have large enough stone.
Yeah.
And who cares, kind of?
Through the chair, what size stone are you talking about? Three inch minus?
Yeah, yeah, probably three or four inches, I, I don't wanna go six inch.
Six is too large.
So, and I think one or two inch would be a bit too small, so three, four would be, would be out of it.
Even three, three inch you're on the maximum if you're driving over it with a car.
Yeah.
Four inch, six inch, you're talking about running over it with backhoes and equipment, three inch under, it's vehicle.
Yeah.
Once you get over that, you're getting too gnarly.
Yeah, obviously, the, the, the site is completed now, so we're not gonna be moving through there with construction traffic or anything, the only thing that sort of goes around would be the, the snow plow and then the, the heat sort of truck for, for maintenance, which is maybe used in the.
If you're running, through the chair, if you're running a power on that, have you ever tried to plow over three inch minus?
I would have to, that's one of the questions that I would have to have, where the incendiary that we lift the plow, lift the plow up and have a sign up there saying lift plow.
You're not, you're not plowing over three inch minus, I'm just telling you that right now, you're a bulldozer over three inch minus.
You'd run a big skis on.
It's gnarly.
Yeah.
I mean, through the chair, I just put some down, I know what it is, so normally, you go three inch minus, then you go three quarter on top to lock it in.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're just making a mess.
Like a regrinding.
And not only that, your three inch minus, you're gonna push it into the ground, while you drive over it, you're gonna push it into the soil, so it's gonna require maintenance.
Yeah.
That's a fact, so, something to consider.
Okay.
Your three inch, all you're gonna do is two-track it, you'll have a hump in the middle, and two lows, we'll tell you that, over time, so.
We have a little settle.
Do you have your report back?
All right, yeah, just something, do what he's proposing, report back at the next meeting.
Yeah, could you, Mr. Cook, could you please take some pictures after you decide what it is that you're going to do up there, and send them to Matt, and provide an update at the next meeting on January 15th? 15th?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
What is next? Subdivision regs?
Yep, we did have the subdivision regulations to review this evening. However, given that we don't have all the members here, and we'd like to get everyone's feedback for that discussion, we'd like to propose that we delay that to the January meeting for discussion.
Yep. Yeah. By consensus, yeah. Sure.
I concur. I think what's been written up is good so far. I know a few more modifications, but to go over it at the full board is important.
I'll look into the commercial industrial aspect of this as well.
Thank you.
Now, we just have to stop waving some of the requirements.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll pitch it back.
Couple of things for the chairman that I added to this agenda are ongoing development. I added O'Leary Welding, because that's an ongoing project. Douglas Package Store is something that we approved that hasn't started yet, and 286 Webster Street for the vehicle storage. So those are ongoing development. Those have been added to this.
I did see on 286 Webster that they've started to do some work.
Yeah, they put their erosion control measures up. I reviewed those. I don't know if they started clearing yet or not, but...
I didn't see clearing, but I saw the erosion control.
And Sutton Douglas?
Yeah.
Sutton Douglas, they have not started yet.
No, Webster.
They transferred the land, but they haven't started their... They haven't scheduled their pre-construction meeting with us.
That's on Route 60, the clearing?
No.
No, no, the one off, it's off Depot.
Off Forestry.
Depot Road.
Deval Road and Sutton.
Sutton.
That whole one.
Yeah, Deval.
Yeah.
Above Deval. It's gonna be the main entrance. It's gonna start on Sutton side.
Right. They're supposed to hold a pre-construction meeting before they get going, so I'm still waiting on that.
Okay. Yeah, because that's what, 30 houses?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
With development there.
Yeah.
With the neighbors and the tiny roads.
On the Douglas side.
On the Douglas side, right.
But the main will probably be on the Sutton side.
How many subdivisions total now to the chair? Have we had a dozen yet? We've got a few. We're at 11. We're a tiny town. Not anymore. There's 10 on this list.
10, yeah.
10? You lost one.
On this list.
Oh, William Drive is not on here. But... How about the one on North Street, the very... On the Sutton line? Obviously, that was a comprehensive permit, so we don't really have any oversight? Yeah, that's North Village. CPA governs that, because they comp. Do we get any kind of reports of what's happening up there from anybody? Nope, we don't. Sovereignation. Yeah. Truly. Yikes. Other than that, I think we just have minutes.
I did read them. I didn't see anything that jumped out at me. Entertained a motion to accept the minutes of the Wednesday, November 13th, planning board?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Guys have it.
Anything to discuss? Not anticipated and advanced, so they can meet tonight.
Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Benoit, for your patience this evening.
Jumping into that seat can be challenging. Seriously.